I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me in prayer? Father, we come to you this evening, we're just really thankful. This month, we have a day that we call Thanksgiving, and it is that season to be thankful. And we're just so thankful for our families that we have, and the blessings of being with them. We thank you for our country and what it stands for. And we thank you for this city. We thank you for all of those that volunteer, all of those that give their time to make this a great place. And so, we just want to praise you. We want to thank you for who you are, because you're our Lord and our Savior, and we owe so much to you. And we just want to thank you, Father. We ask that you be with this meeting tonight, Father. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Call this me into order. We have some comments. Sue Ducharme.
Is it applicable to make my comment after the agenda?
Yeah. We're doing it.
Which item is it, Sue?
Oh, I believe.
Yeah, she needs to make her comments when we talk about it.
Okay. Are you at four or five?
I'm sorry?
In four or five?
Both.
Both, okay. So wait for both of them? All right. All right, so consent agenda. A through E, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Did you catch who that was?
Zee was.
Yeah.
Okay. It was all kind of mumble at the same time. All right. All those, okay.
All those.
Motion passes. Okay. Item number four, public hearing discussion, possible action concerning variance request to allow an all-metal accessory building at 6909 Chris Madison Road. Any comments?
Cody would make the presentation.
Oh, Cody.
Good evening. To give you a little bit of background, we have seen a lot of the metal storage buildings pop up in backyards or towards the sides of the house. The planning commission really wanted to kind of be proactive in making sure that, you know, we were letting these homeowners and property owners know that as they stand, these metal buildings are not within the design standards, the building design standards that City Council adopted on November 17th of 2009. And so, I've got a copy of it here, kind of what I'm citing. Outbuildings, accessory buildings must be of similar color to the main residence, and the material must complement the main residence. Placement of all outbuildings, regardless of size, must be to the rear or the front of the facade of the residence. And so, this along with quotes found in the comprehensive plan talking about neighborhood conservation, architectural significance, complementary materials, preserve existing housing stock, and healthy neighborhoods, all go into kind of why the planning commission and the Community and Economic Development Office have began formalizing a process for a recommendation from the planning commission, hearing this to make to you. Both of the requests that you're seeing tonight were unanimously disapproved by the planning commission. They're making a recommendation to not allow these requests. I do believe that they are a little bit different. I would say that the 6909 Chris Madison Road is a little bit offset from the road. This one might provide a little bit more consideration, but still, the materials that are planned to be used are not in compliance with the building design standards. So, I've also got a planning commission member here, and I know that Sue Ducharme of Neighborhood Solutions wanted to talk a little bit about that. So, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, Cody, I have a question. So, were they approached, the owners approached, to say, hey, if you make this in compliance, when it comes to colors and placement, then that's going to help your case a lot more?
During the planning commission, it was noted that the materials specifically are worth a concern for why the recommendation was to not approve these. Or there was no recommendation to approve these, I should say.
Well, I just wondered if they had been, had approached the owners and said, hey, if you fix this, it'd be better, or?
Both cases during the October planning commission were stressed that the materials specifically were the major hang-up, and that another option or something like that might be considered in a different light. More complementary materials, I should say.
And did they reply back and say, we're not going to do it, or?
6909 Chris Madison Road, I don't take this the wrong way, to the applicant, he did verbalize that he would come and try his hand here tonight during the public hearing. And both applicants are here this evening as well.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Okay. Okay, I guess we'll do the applicants first. Larry and Donna McKay? Do you want to speak? If so, to the podium, please.
Just to ask some questions.
Okay. And you're actually?
Fifty-three eleven.
Fifty-three eleven, though. Okay, that would be actually item five. Do we need to have them?
No, we need to take them in order that they're in.
Okay, we'll, sorry, we'll do four first. I don't think they signed up.
Hi, my name is Steve Berry. I live at 6909 Chris Madison. As you can see, my application, you know, is for a metal building. I believe my application is different than others, because mine's totally hidden. I'm on a dead-end road. I've got no one behind me, no one to the south of me. You'll never see my building. I think metal buildings are way different than what people used to think of them as just a barn in the woods, or a barn in the field. Metal buildings today look better than most houses that you see around, the way they look, and the metal itself, you know, is guaranteed at 30 and 40 years. I don't understand why, you know, that you guys don't want any metal buildings. I think that, you know, if they were made out of a certain metal and stuff, I think that they're way more attractive than wood building that you're going to have to turn around and paint, re-roof, non-stop maintenance for the rest of your life.
Any feedback, questions?
I have a question that I'd like to ask.
Yes, ma'am.
What is your house outside the exterior?
Brick.
It's brick.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
What's the main color besides brick? I mean, is it just pure brick, red brick?
My house is kind of a taupe-colored brick.
Okay.
With a regular comp roof.
What color is this metal building going to be?
It's a tan color.
Can you paint it taupe?
I'm sorry?
Can you paint it taupe? I just figured, you know, if it's, if the idea is to make the, it's similar to your house, how far is it from the house?
Hey, John.
Yeah.
You can scroll right up and see where it's going to be.
Right. On the other side, yeah.
That's where it is, facing that.
Okay.
I have a picture here in case you want to see where it sits, way back here in the trees, all covered in trees. This is Chris Madison Road. This is north up here in Tennessee, way back here where no one sees it whatsoever.
Okay, so, you want to sit down?
I'd like to talk a little bit about.
Should we do a motion first?
No.
Oh, do you want to talk first? You want to talk about this?
If I'm to vogue on each of them individually, I'd like to speak to each of them.
Well, then, you want to stand up there?
My name is Sue Ducharme. I live on Lakeside Drive, across the lake from this gentleman. As I recall, his new building is in the 400 square feet?
It's 408.
Eight?
Eight.
Okay, so nearly 500 square feet. I'm not sure if he knows just how tall that building would stand. And I do realize that he is set back somewhat up on the hill in an extremely nice neighborhood. And I think you have quite a bit of property. I looked at some of the specs and pictures myself. And while now, it may be hidden, my concern, after working in neighborhoods for over 15 years as a capacity building director, what I know is, he may not live there, this family, for the rest of their lives. We don't know who will own that house another time and what they might do with it. But what we do know is, there are no other buildings in that area. It is kind of a hillside property, beautiful, nice, long curved driveways, not just in his home, but just directly across the road from him. So, I do object to seeing a building put in a neighborhood that might hinder development in the future. If he has a lot of land, and he can kind of bury it way back in the back on his land, that's, you know, I suppose that's a point. But the other point is, does that hinder future development on a hillside overlooking Guthrie Lake? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, do I hear a?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions if I can.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Stephen, if you don't mind. So, on this, Chris Madison, how much land do you own there?
I have 1.72 acres, depending on who you ask. One abstract says 2.34, the other one says 1.72, so I think it's 1.72, but I'm not sure.
And what about this land behind you? Who owns that?
Taylor family.
Taylor family owns that.
And yes, we are going to develop it one of these days.
And I just wanted to say, we do have a very large metal building in our neighborhood that sits right on the street, that's just around the corner from me.
Don't get started on that.
And it's a very attractive building. I mean, I don't know who would have a problem with it. It's a beautiful building.
Any other questions?
Would you consider bricking up part of it, so it looks more like your house?
I couldn't afford it. I mean, I would, I don't know what I'm going to do with all my stuff. I'm a man, I've got tools, I've got lawnmowers. I don't have any room to put all my stuff. I've got storage buildings that I'm paying right now to rent, because I don't have a place to put all my stuff. Brick, I couldn't brick it. I mean, I could, maybe. I was going to retire in a year and a half, but I'd have to work a few more years before I could brick it.
What's the zoning out there? Is it residential?
Yep. But it's still in the city limits, though, no matter what way you look at it. We're still in the city, we're still considered part of the city limits. So, we have, what happened was Jim went ahead, Jim Garland went ahead and built the barn. He said he was going to brick part of it, and then didn't do that, so.
Or is that the neighbor across the street?
No, it's actually around the corner. Let's go across the, well, I'll show it to you here in a little bit, but it's back to the east of us is where it's at. And he had agreed to brick it and then didn't do it, so that's what he told my mother, let's put it that way.
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to speak one more time.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Sue?
What I would like to say is that where his property is located, it's not so far removed from Seward and Coltrane, where they've been developing $500,000 homes over the last 10 years. So, those enormous homes, beautiful homes, much like his home. And the problem is, you put one building in, and the next person, just like yourself, wants to know why you can't have one too. And I think that Councilman Taylor is a good explanation for that. If he plans to develop it someday, I want to know the family that's going to be in the back row looking at that metal building. And you can put all the brick on it you want to, but it's still, it looks, it's as tall as a two-story building. That's the problem. So, you can see them over a church steeple. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Well.
Yeah. Brian?
Well, I'm still, I've got a little bit of, I hear what everybody's saying, and Sue, you and I have talked before, and I know in the past, and I know that there's a lot of people that just go and put these metal buildings up, and they do. I've got a lot of land, and we plan on developing it, but there's metal buildings popped up all over, and I'd like to know where, how they got permitted. Seriously, as big as this one. So, it's kind of one of those double-edged swords here that, I mean, is there no way you can, you can brick half of this building? I mean, you know, because my position is this, if you were, if you sat here and said, you know, I've got 30 acres of land or 20 acres of land, that'd be one thing, and that's kind of what I was thinking you might have, were going to say. Yeah. No, no, but, because there's a lot of that going around in this town. As areas got annexed, you know, there's people that have old farms and that type stuff, and I understand them wanting to be able to store their equipment and all that. And I think our zoning, I think we need to take a hard look at some of our zoning and some of our ordinances as a council, and maybe we need to table this matter a little bit and come back to it. That would be my recommendation, just as a whole, because what you've got going on, and I'm not saying just because of this one here, I'm saying, but overall, there has to be some kind of give and take on, and again, maybe not on this one, on less than two acres. But, you know, I know there's a bunch of people out there that have 10 and 20 acres, and, you know, there needs to be some type of, well, like on your land, Jeff, you've got a bunch of land out there. If you wanted to put up a barn, you know, and you've got X amount of land, you ought to be able to do it, and that's my opinion.
Yeah.
And it's just, that's just my opinion. I just think we need to revisit the whole ordinances and what we're in the zoning side of it, because there's a lot of zoning out there that's not even zoned properly.
Jeff?
Okay, here's what I want to say. I'm between kind of a rock and a hard place, because I've got neighbors out here, and I don't want to make your neighbors mad, but at the same time, we've, when did you say we did this, 2009? 2009, okay. When I built my barn on my property over at my mother's place, we built that back in 1983, before ordinances, and that was even before they had anything. We built it back in the back, you cannot see it from anywhere. Trees have grown up around it. As my wife and I discussed it, I want to vote yes, but at the same time, I want to vote no. The reason is, I want to follow what the rules are, and the rules are, we can't build anything like it. If we start doing that now and start just changing, if we decide we're going to go out and change this, then we're going to have a whole bunch, these buildings are going to start popping up. And I know where there's a whole bunch of them right now that I see all out in the community that I think, you're right. I think people have just been sticking them up just for the fun of it, and they want to see how far they can get away with it. And I don't want to see that. I mean, it's not, we're not trying to be Edmund, but at the same time, I want to do some things, I want to move Guthrie forward, and that's the only way I see doing it. If you brick it, fine, I got no problem with that. I've had several people already text me today, said that if they bricked it, they wouldn't have a problem with it. But the problem that I see is, if we build a metal building, it's still a metal building. And I know I've had nice chat with him, and he's my neighbor, and I don't want him to shoot me later on, get mad at me. But at the same time, I think if we don't follow the rules now, well, why have rules?
Well, you said exactly my point, that you've got a bunch of land, it was built way in the back.
Right.
It's behind trees, nobody's ever going to see it, but that same person today would be prevented from doing that within the ordinance, and that ordinance doesn't make sense for that particular piece of land. Not this land, I'm not talking about this one.
Right.
I'm talking about tabling this to go back and revisit the ordinances and look at the whole rural side of Guthrie as well. And again, it probably would never affect you one way or the other, from what's going to, you know, what could potentially happen here tonight if we don't go do that. But I think that we need to go back and look at the rural side of Guthrie before we decide on this thing here.
Are you, but this is inside the city limits.
But inside the city limits has been annexed, and there's a lot of rural still within side the city limits. That's what I'm saying. Not near as much as there used to be, Cheryl, I'll grant you that. Most people have sold their land, and it's been developed, but there still is.
And the land around it, if I understood Jeff correctly, is with that intention to be developed into a development, which would, it would not be agriculture, it would be residential. I, I'm familiar with the design guidelines that were set about in 2009, and there was a lot of consideration given at that time for the areas that were, had been annexed. Granted, you couldn't do anything about the buildings that were grandfathered in that were done prior to that time, but that time going forward, we have, we have a long-term plan for the inside-the-city limits of Guthrie, and if we deviate from that long-term plan one, two, three, four, five times, it'll collapse. We won't have it anymore. That's.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that you can have compromise in anything that you do, to a degree. And I'm not saying let everybody under two acres go build any kind of metal building that they want to build. That's not what I'm saying. But there are a lot of people that, and, well, Jeff's property's a prime one, okay? And there's a lot of others that I know of that have significant property that you would never see, that's privately held, and they don't plan on developing it. But then, there are also a lot of them that I agree completely, that in neighborhoods, they're just, I've owned another home right over here, and I would never put a metal building in it, ever. So, that's kind of what I'm struggling with. I've got the yes and the no side going here. All I want to do is take a closer look. I understand that the council went in in 2009, and they set guidelines and standards. Don't get me wrong, I understand that. But the council also, and councils are there to try to find common ground. I don't think it's going to take that long to relook at it. How long could it take? 30 minutes? An hour?
We've been six months on the sales tax issue. Just so you know, that has been booted down the road since day one, or this council started since the election, so it could take a while.
Well, what I'm wondering is if there is concern about the ordinance, that we should, in my opinion, maybe go by the rules now, and if we want to consider this, this is something we take up. But I don't know if we should table something that's going to take potentially months.
I think we need to make an action on it. I don't think it should be tabled, but I do think we need to look at the ordinances, because we've got people popping up these little buildings, and they're putting several of them on their property, which.
That's what I'm saying.
That's the problem.
Well, and that's a prime example, the ordinance will show that you can put, what, a 200-square-foot building? And, but they can go and put 10 of them. Okay? And an ordinance doesn't prevent that.
250?
250 square feet, but there's not a number of them you can put.
Okay.
So, they can back them, and back them, and back them, and back them.
If a person wants an outbuilding for tools and lawnmowers and toys, you know, riding equipment, whatever, I understand your dilemma. If it were built like a detached garage, bricked like the house, there would be no issue. We wouldn't even be having this conversation.
No, there wouldn't be an issue, but I've talked to a lot of the planning people, I watch all the planning meetings, and the big issue is, is that the way our current ordinance reads, they can put, there's no number that they can't put in of these buildings on the same property.
Yeah, but that's not this issue, but it is.
It's not this issue, so that's, so you're right. It probably doesn't need to be tabled, but I wanted to make the comment that I want to go back and revisit this.
We do need to visit the ordinance, but that's a different question.
We can certainly do that down the line, revisit the ordinance, so.
But, do I hear a motion for this specific item, on number four?
Can I speak one more time?
Sure.
I just wanted to add, and I think Cody can back me up on this, the planning commission offered to approve me if I were to go.
Cody, if I'm not wrong, they said if I would use a traditional construction like wood with a comp roof, is that, is that what they said? If I were to go with wood instead of brick and a comp roof?
Then you're approved. I saw the meeting.
Yeah, and that's my point. It's the metal building and the height.
Well, the height, there's no taller than my current, I mean, it wouldn't even be as tall as my current route.
But you can't take the height into that consideration, because he can build a wood building as high as he wants to build it.
But it would have to be bricked or complementary to his house. Metal is not.
But you can.
There's, that's a difference.
Cody, would that fit the guidelines?
Well, Cheryl just said about brick or complementary. A lot of these homes, the, sorry.
Yeah. But Councilwoman Pageant just mentioned about the "and complementary" is the key. You know, Mr. Berry's house is brick, but, you know, maybe 80 other percent of the housing stock in Guthrie might not be brick. It might be the panel, the craftsman-style house, those kind of things. Those "and complementary" materials is the key. What we're not seeing right now with metal carports or metal accessory buildings, the metal sheds that you can go buy from, you know, all these different contractors, is that those are not complementary towards anything in the residential zoning. Actually, in the same building design standards on number seven, you actually say that all metal buildings, all metal exterior buildings are allowed only in industrial zones. And so, you don't even allow all metal buildings in general commercial, C2, C3 situations off of the highway or along South Division.
So, Cody, is that a, he was talking about making it out of wood, is this the compromise that would, I mean, would that be okay?
I'm, I.
I just want to verify from you that.
I of course can't speak for the planning commission. You have a planning commissioner here. I think that it would be.
Joe, can you come up?
I think that it would be.
Well, I don't, and Joe, before you get up, I mean, we've got five planning commissioners, and they voted on something.
They voted on no metal building.
And what those other four guys' thoughts are, I don't think Joe can speak to.
I just want to make sure we're clear on the code. The code allow it, what's the?
Without your opinion, does the code, would the code allow that? Regardless of what your opinion is.
Okay, but even when you're talking about codes, you do end up having a bit of opinion. But what was mentioned earlier about height of a building, whether it's, whether it's wood or not. The ordinance refers to the fact that they're subordinate buildings, which by definition means that they are not taller, higher, more prominent than the home. We have, and this is just an example, there is a new garage next, and many of you may have seen it, there's a new garage right next to the old fire station on the west side.
Yes.
And, you know, Councilman Bothroyd was talking about revisiting some of the codes. You know, as written, the codes now, and this is off-topic, but, you know, metal roofs aren't allowed, and you do see, you know, even in historical communities all over the country, like in, you know... all over the country, like in, you know, a lot of the resorts in Denver, where they have these seamless metal roofs, but that garage on the west side at the old, um...
Fire station.
Fire station.
Fire station, has a metal roof, but it has Masonite siding, which is also a very affordable alternative, and I'm not speaking for the other commissioners, but I, I, I do feel like, you know, when you talk about similar materials, wood is a similar material, even if the house is brick, because you've got wood soffits, so, I think very affordable garages could be built with wood material, but it's the metal, and like Cody said, the line in there is, you know, even in a commercial zone, you, only 60% of your building can be metal now, it has to have windows and doors, and, so, even in a commercial zone, you can't have an all-metal building, and our residential areas, our residential zoned areas are the most restrictive areas that we have, according to code, so I think there is room for compromise, like Councilman Bothroyd was talking about, Masonite's very affordable, I think we need to revisit, like you said, the 250-square-foot little sheds, may need to revisit metal buildings, you know, you can look at, well, I'm not going to mention any names, for fear of embarrassing someone that has a beautiful metal roof in town, you might notice one on South Division as you head out south with a green roof, but, yeah, I think, you know, 2009 was a while back, things need to be tweaked, but I do think there's room for compromise, and I do think there's affordable alternatives other than a, a complete metal building, and our concern was the spirit and the vision of the ordinance and the way it's written, not that there's not room for, you know, some tweaking.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Hey Cody, can I ask you a question real quick, can he, if he, it sounds like he might compromise on this, would we have him reapply with the planning commission with his new plans, I mean, it could be a big enough change, or can we just go by what he says tonight?
Well, his request is for a metal building, we either...
That's what I'm saying, do you have to reapply?
On the metal building, I think you should start over.
So can we, can, can this be withdrawn if he wants to go back there, or do we need to vote on it?
And if your plan after this discussion is to submit a different building material, same-sized building, then you could withdraw this, resubmit this application with that building material, and probably be on, I don't know when the planning commission meets next, but be back here pretty quickly.
Does that sound like a plan?
It does, if I don't have to pay another $150.
We'd probably waive that on this, so...
Yeah, that's what I... I would make the motion to waive that.
Yes, I'd second that.
I think we're, I think we're saying similar materials.
Well, if, if they bricked it halfway, I'm assuming, Cody, that they could consider that at this point, under this variance, if, but...
I think, I think it'd be good...
Tom, we have a motion to waive the $150 reapply fee back in a second.
Sure.
Well, that's...
That's a completely different matter, that's not even, that's not even on the agenda, so we can't have a motion for that.
I can't do that, but...
I think...
You have to decide whether you want to vote on this as presented...
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw.
Okay, withdraw, and talk to, talk to Cody about possibilities and what's doable, so, all right?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so do I have to make a formal motion to withdraw or anything?
No, that one's withdrawn, so...
Just withdrawn, all right. So number five, public hearing discussion, possible actions concerning variance request to allow an all-metal accessory building on 5311 Metal Lake Drive, do we have, I guess we have Larry and Donna McKay on this one?
Cody needs to make it.
Oh, Cody first, okay.
Same scenario, for the, kind of similar request, the problem that the planning commission had with this one was, because this is a corner lot, it has enhanced visibility from not only the front, but also the side, and so, and this is a very, very large structure being proposed, I think that that was disconcerting for a lot of the commission members, and we actually did receive public comment voicing their non-support for this application from surrounding neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. or Mrs. McKay, who am I going? Okay? Ms. McKay? Okay.
I do want to, I understand, if the board has been given this responsibility, they have to follow the ordinances, but we are curious what the special use permit is for. We thought it was going to be like a variance to the existing ordinance.
Somebody want to, Cody?
To, to kind of enlighten where we're at, a special use, if you remember, almost a year ago, the council decided to require a special use permit for all, for all storage unit buildings, or commercial storage unit operations, the variance that, the, these, these applications are for a variance, but it is a special use, because the, the term "special use" is in, in light of the variance request, and so because this is not a strictly permitted use due to the building design standards, this is a special use variance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. The other thing that I would kind of disagree with what you said a while ago, I don't feel that we really were given any instructions, options, and that's what we want to find out, we want to comply with the ordinance, we do want a building, and if it's possible, I think we want to withdraw our application at this point, to go back and revisit what we can put up.
Now, you were at planning a couple of weeks ago, right?
October the 8th.
But they gave you options as well.
I don't, I, I did not really hear any options.
Because I actually watched it, they said too, that it would have to be wood or similar materials of the surrounding...
The, the comment that I recall was that it was too large, and it faced, like, like...
It faced, it faced the wrong way, I remember that part.
Yeah, so we kind of left wondering, okay, what is it that we need to look at to change?
Make a motion? To do it?
Let her go. I say we let her go back.
Yeah, Mr. McKay? Yeah.
My name is Larry McKay. I've heard at the planning commission meeting, and I've heard tonight, that this is a large building, it's 24 by 30, which is 720 square feet, it's no taller, will be no taller than the house, it, you're talking about all-metal building, it's going to have a garage, two garage doors in it, one, one in the front and one in the back, a window and a door. But like my wife said, we're at the point where you tell us, I wish somebody from the city would come out and look at my property and say, okay, here's what you need to do, let's put it over here, let's put whatever kind of siding on it, the building was, I know most of you have heard of Madden Building, building by Madden, it's a real good quality, it'll last, just like the gentleman said, metal's going to outlast wood.
Yeah.
But that was, that's beside the point.
Yeah, it would be it.
We're at the point where, well, the people...
How much, how much land is it this place?
I've got, we've got about eight tenths of an acre.
I know that the planning commission would most likely, if you requested, I'm sure some members of the planning would go out potentially and, and assist you in determining, I'll represent you in the city and go out and assist you in determining, and to determine where you need to put this building, what size it needs to be, what materials it needs to be made out of, so that you can get your building.
Okay, one other thing, the buildings by Madden, that's BBM, they, after this, after the planning commission meeting, they got with me, because I've already paid like half of, of the, for the material, they've already put the, made the material and everything, it's just a contractor come out and put it up.
So the building's up?
No, no.
No, they said, we, what, we could put brick around it, but still going to have a metal roof, still have the metal skeleton, it's going to be on a slab, and it's going to have electricity, I just, I don't know where to go from here.
Did you buy Richard Dyrton's old place?
Yes.
Yes.
I know where it's at then.
And in the back, we have a 10 by 16 metal building, it's sitting on a slab, and the slab is all cracked up, I, I would like to move, move that building off there and break up all that slab and...
What, I, I'm just kind of wondering if this is kind of similar to the last one, where maybe we should just withdraw, and, and you can talk to Cody, and you guys can figure out something that works, go through planning, get a, a plan that they, they're okay with, and come back again, but...
But what you're also saying is that your dilemma is you've already put cash out on this building, right?
Yeah.
Did you get a, but you went and, you got a permit first before you did that?
Our contractor came up to City Hall, we don't know who he talked to, and they pretty much indicated, well, you just, all you have to do is get this special use permit, that's how you are still able to go forward, and at that point, no, we weren't, we were not out of money at that point, but that's on us, that's, that's not something...
Well, part, part of your ordinance, or rules or whatever, require us to get a list of all, everybody in the neighborhood within 300 feet, to do that, you have to go to the abstractor's office and get that list, which is $200, $250, so there, I'm out, we're out $400, not counting the $2,500 I paid to BBM, and I don't know if I'll ever get that back.
Well, I think that we're willing to waive the $150 for you to go back in front of planning to try to work out some type of smaller building potentially, I think the size of it is the issue, I don't know if it's completely the issue, if it was built out of the right materials.
Well, and we understood that part clearly, that that meeting was the material.
Right.
I mean, are you willing to sit down with Cody and just compromise and see what you can come out, and just have something that the city's okay with, right? Cody, you're willing to work, work with them, and...
Well, I think you'd have to work with planning.
Well, and then you go to planning, he would...
He needs to work with Cody.
Cody?
I respect what you're saying about having councilmen and planning commissioners go look at it, you're going to be voting on it, so you don't need to be telling them what to do, and then...
Yeah, you can't do that, yeah.
No, I mean, he needs to work with the planning department on his...
Well, you were saying that you would go out there, and he's saying, Randall's saying, you shouldn't go out there.
Right, I understand.
I think Cody's the one, been planning the part, and the staff's who needs to...
Yeah, so Cody needs to work with, so if they can compromise on something that's workable, and if you guys are both amendable to that, then they go to planning, hopefully a workable plan, and come back to us, and we're more likely to deal, it sounds like that's something, there's, it sounds like there's some successful path for this, so if you guys can be amendable, sounds like you will be, and I think the city will be, so...
Just one more comment.
Yeah.
For about half of my life, I've wanted either a classic pickup or a classic car, and you got to have some place to put something on it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, work with Cody, Cody's right there, so...
Thank you.
Now, I have a question about this.
Sure.
It says, public hearing discussion, possible actions concerning variance request, how come the fee is not concerning that request, how can't we make a, a motion to waive that fee for them formally, right here, and, and say that we're waiving the fee, because it's concerning the various requests?
Well...
It's on the agenda.
I agree.
I did make the motion, I never withdrew.
You got to pay it once, it's the second time you're saying, right?
I suppose you could ask them to withdraw the fee and then, vote with that...
I mean, can we...
I, I think staff is aware that you do not want to charge the $150.
Right, right.
Could we just make a...
And we could, we're going to assume that's a part of the same application process, and they're just admitting their application process as they originally submitted.
I just want to make sure that that, that happens.
It's like a re-edit.
It'll be an amended application, it'll be part of the...
Yeah, I want to figure that out first.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so we, we're formally withdrawing that, and moving forward?
Oh, withdraw my...
All right.
Pretty good.
Thank you. All right, city managers report.
No report.
That's quick. Right, request comments from members of the city council, uh, Council Pageant?
No, I, I think I've talked enough, thank you.
All right, okay.
How about those, Taylor? How about those cowboys?
Two of us, right?
No, this week, they're going to, they're going to finish...
This will burn from the audience.
They're going to finish 12-0, the end of the season, that bunch down south's going to be red and white.
Okay.
And, whatever, and, and I'm, Guthrie's doing great, we're, all we got to do now is beat Deer Creek, and we finished in second place, and Chris is gone, so that figures, but I think we, we should host the first round, is that, is that right?
We win, we win, we get Ardmore, we lose, we go to Alters.
Okay, I'd rather play Ardmore here than going down to Alters, I don't particularly like that, it's a long drive.
But don't go play my Bulldogs, and they split allegiance then.
I spent some time down there.
Other than that, oh, well, see, yeah, that's it, sorry, nothing else.
All right, Councilman Thomas?
I have nothing to add.
All right, Councilman Bothroyd?
What?
I have nothing to add right at this time.
All right, well, that's about the least comments I've seen, and I'll just, I'll, I'm, I'll, I won't say anything either, so what I would like to do is, I would like to place us in recess, and call city council into Guthrie Public Works Authority, I assume we need a vote for that?
Yeah, we're not in recess, but we do need a motion to go into city council, our executive session.
So I need a motion in a second?
Motion second, go into executive session.
Second. Anybody want to discuss anything, any?
No, this is not, this is the...
We just want to go to the next meeting, Public Works, and then we'll come back.
No, you're going to recess to go to Public Works?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all we're doing.
You do need recess, a motion to recess.
We're just, okay, do we need to redo that?
So moved.
So moved, recess, second, all right, so...
Go into recess.
Who, motion actually recess, yeah.
From city council.
To Guthrie Public Works, and then we'll come back to executive session, as I do. All right, any comments, any, all right, let's, let's vote.
Hey, let's do it.
All right, motion passes by consensus, yeah, so, do I need to?
Church calls order.
Okay, Guthrie Public Works, the consent agenda, number eight?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, vote.
All votes ranked.
All right, motion passes, okay, we're adjourned, and then, let's go back to...
At a recess, calls back to order.
Calls back to order, okay, order, city council meeting, we're back, and, so consider approval to convene an executive session pursuant of authority of Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes 2001 as follows, 307B4, for the purposes of discussing confidential communications between the city council and its attorney concerning the pending investigations or claim, Logan County Rural Water District Number One.
So moved, second.
She got it.
Although, okay, vote.
All votes ranked.
All right.